Welcome to the House of Representatives. The House of Representatives is a state of America and a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to open the meeting to the public. Any comments from the public at this time?
Do we have a few comments? If that's okay. Great, I'm Dave Kreitz with the ERS working on the old fighter site up the street there. I want to come back again to this meeting. It was important to me. First of all, I want to apologize to Mr. Cooper. We had some permitting issues crop up last week and I'm going to take responsibility for that. I was given what I thought was good information on the permitting. I passed that information on to Mr. Cooper. The information was wrong. Mr. Cooper got very mad at me. I got very mad at the general contractor. And, but I think that's solved. I think we have a good path working forward. I think the relationship's been established. And as a matter of fact, tomorrow, if we can, anybody who can get to a meeting with the general contractor will be, has made himself available. He's going to come to town and he'll be here from 3:00 to 6:00. So if that works for anybody, you know, I can, we can talk about it more after the meeting, after tonight's meeting. But I think it'd be great to meet him. You know, I introduced who he was at the last meeting. But I made a commitment to you guys on the permitting at the last meeting and it didn't, it didn't happen. So, main reason I'm here, one of the main reasons I'm here is to apologize to John. The other thing I wanted to do, talk a little bit about is the relationship between the tenants and the village. I think that that's really going to be a really important thing moving forward. And as the tenants, as the tenant base grows, you know, obviously there will be some great benefits to the village as far as employment. You know, we're very confident with the level, skill level of employees, the number of employees, what they're going to do for the village, you know, for the businesses in the village. And that's all possible. But when I look, when I look towards the vision of change, of things that I think that we all want, as far as big things, I think that the, the big things are going to be achievable based on the relationship between the village and the, and the tenants. And what I mean by that is, for example, the last 4th of July, I went to the tenants and I got, I think, seventy-five-hundred bucks donated towards the 4th of July fireworks show. That's going to grow. You know, I'm going to get ten thousand, then I'm going to get twelve thousand, I'm going to get fifteen, you know, until the fireworks show is bigger, is bigger, bigger than it's ever been here. Which, you know, that, that's the easy part. But the big stuff, the big stuff, you know, the, the thoughts about motel, right? Thoughts of new businesses on Lake Street. That's, I think, is going to be critical that the, that the tenants up there at the site can bring that to the town. And Brett and I talked about the whole hotel idea. And it's, the, to get a traditional hotel, I think is going to be very difficult. You know, where are we going to put it? How is anybody going to make money in a hotel? I'm convinced that I can, with the right tenant base, with the, with the right amount of income, I think I can go to the tenants and tell them, "We need, we need a hotel." And it's not maybe going to make sense. It's maybe it's not a fifteen-year payback. Maybe it's a twenty-five-year payback. But this is what we need in the Village of Rouse's Point. And I'm convinced I can get that done. I, I think I can get a new business opened up every year on Lake Street for ten years straight. I, I think that's doable. Because I can get to the tenants and I believe that the tenants, with the right tenants, I think that that's something that can be achieved. And I'm going to try to do that. So, I just wanted to make sure that we're on the same page as far as the importance of the relationship between the tenant base and the village. And, and I know that John was super mad at, at the whole permitting thing, but I got a phone call that said, "Tell the guys not to come to work tomorrow because the sheriffs are going to be on your property." And then I got another phone call that said, "I'm going to lock your gate. Your gate will be locked in the morning." So, that's worris- worrisome to me. Because if that, if that were to happen to a, you know, a conceivably multimillion-dollar enterprise that's here in the village, it would, it would just, it would set us back so far. So, I wanted to mention it because I want to make sure that we're, there's a process, right? I'm not babysitting the tenants. If they're going to do work in that building, then they need permits. Then they need to get their permits, right? That, that's how it works. But if there's an issue, you know, if there's a problem with the tenant, I just want to make sure that we're all together on the fact that, you know, there's a process that has to happen in order to correct problems. If it's noise or if it's, you know, I remember when the, when we were taking the buildings down and a bunch of plastic glue all over the neighborhood. But we got that solved. You know, we, 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 the contractor was in everybody's backyard picking up the plastic out of the yard. That's how they solved it, right? Because someone made a phone call, we solved it. It wasn't a phone call and a threat that there was the sheriffs were coming. So I want to make sure that, you know, I know Tom wasn't called, right? I know the mayor wasn't called. But I got called. So, I just want the discussion, there to be a discussion about if there is a, if there's a problem, then how is it going to get solved, right? And Tom, I'm sure that there's procedures, there's a process, there's notice, right?
Yep.
And if a tenant doesn't do what they're supposed to do, and they're served the proper notice, right? And they don't respond to the notice, then let's go get them. I mean, I, I'm with that, Wolfie. But I just want to make sure that we're on the same page as far as preemptively, you know, attacking a problem in the, in the wrong manner. So, at any event, that's why I came here mostly to apologize to John, but also to hopefully to keep to develop, keep developing our relationship and making sure that we are all together, working together to attract and maintain and keep the best tenants we can. Because I, I think that's really key to really doing some big things for the village that we might not otherwise, you know, on paper, it might not make sense. I think that we can get some of those things done. So, thank you for, for listening. That's, that's what I had to say tonight.
On your discussion about your motel and stuff, your hotel.
Yeah.
The problem is, the reason why we can't get another hotel here in this village is because of the acreage.
Right.
It's, it's still considered a hotel and a lot of people look at that and it's, it's still a, like, thirty-unit hotel and stuff like that. And people come in and, and they had a survey done on that, I don't know, about ten or twelve years ago, and, and they still won't come in. Nobody will come in.
Right, right. So, in that scenario, we're going to have to go talk to the owner of the acreage, right? So if I can get, if I can get that, if I can get the relationship in the right place and the, and the entity itself is making the, the muddies that they need, I, I don't think that's overcomeable. You know, I think that there's something, we can, we can talk about that. You know, we can approach the acreage and maybe make a change there, right? That, that's my thinking. I think anything's achievable if we're, if we're in this together and we're, and we're working together as a team. But I understand that, I understand the issue with the hotel and the acreage, but I, I don't think that's an insurmountable obstacle for us if we're all working together towards the same thing. I think it's doable. It might not make sense financially. That's probably why, you know, that, that's part of it. But I think if the, if the, if the will is there, I think that we can overcome the fact that it maybe it's a much longer, it maybe it's a much longer play than a traditional motel would be for investment.
Do you, uh, do you know much about the hotel industry and like what their return on investment that they're looking for is in?
I do not, but I do know who does know.
Okay.
In that, that discussion, we can, you know, when it's, when it's appropriate, I think that's something we can get started for sure.
Okay. Because I know with a lot of real estate, there's a lot of like math, they want this X amount of return and this line up for years.
Yeah, it's, it's not going to make sense on paper, but it, but it can make sense with the right scenario, with the right group.
Okay. Is that all? Any other public comments? Okay, minutes of the previous meeting. Make a motion to accept from the permit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Bills?
I have a question. Well, Tom, I see the, the bill for your company has gone up. Is that because of the answers today for some of the stuff that was brought to you?
I think that's part of it, yes.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that.
Yeah.
Everything.
I need to see the breakdown of it, but, yeah.
Okay. So I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the bills?
We have four additions this evening. First one is Ben Arnold for twelve dollars and ninety-five cents for certificate paper. The second one is business card for one thousand three oh four seventy-five, which is the Nikon phone vault training school for the treasurer, and nineteen oh five for training expenses for the electric department. And Excel is for forty-one thousand five fifty thirty-one.
Make a motion, the bill will be paid.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any correspondence today?
No.
Okay, I've got a few samples. Let's start with the resolution of the Village Board of the Village of Rouse's Point authorizing submission of the New York State Water and Infrastructure Improvement Act. We have grant applications for the Village of Rouse's Point water treatment improvement. We're in a good spot because we've already done all the other work for this as we did the designing. Because New York State wants all the information in by the twenty-second of next month. There's a lot of other places that are not as remotely near prepared as we are, so that'll kind of limit competition for the WEA grant because not a lot of them are going to have enough time to do it, but we're in the perfect spot to get everything set up. And this is the resolution to authorize the grant application. Make a motion?
Second.
Dale Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Trustee Pelkey?
Aye.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye. It's our, I'd say trustee Menard. Okay. I called PLM about the enclosure setting files. Black and McDonald is an engineer and they work with a lot, so does Plattsburg. So I'm making a motion for me to sign this so we can get the enclosure setting files properly done.
Did you make it a little?
All seconded out. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I think I have another. Oh, in line with the electric stuff. A company has contacted me. They, they work with server farms. That is the thing that they do. They've been informed of the rider to the hydroelectric contract and they're perfectly fine with paying for the entire PLM study and any other engineering or study work that needs to be done to make sure that we can safely provide them with power. And they'd also be willing to pay for the upgrade to the infrastructure as is required by the rider. I asked them to come here today, but they're not, they weren't able to come in today. I don't think that it requires any action on our part immediately, but...
Do we have a name?
No, definitely not. I asked them to come in. I know the guy who approached me, Joe Church.
What, what site are they proposing?
Power Tech's property. My concern is they don't actually have, there's not enough power there right now to do that. So they'd have to pay for a new substation and wire to be sent up there. Something to think about. I'm hoping they can come in next meeting. There's nothing, no action you can take off and take on that at this time. Okay. We got the Clinton County Health Department Complete Streets Concept Plan. This is just a plan that they presented to us about what's going on. I make a motion to support their plan?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I've read through, they sent me an email about this. I've read through much of it, although there seems to be some new stuff in here.
Just a recommendation.
Yeah, this is all a recommendation.
When are they going to?
I don't think there'll be anything done until next year.
We already got the money for this, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, the grant money was already approved for this.
Yeah.
And we have to do these kinds of services. So this is already approved, right?
Yeah. I wanted to make a motion to supporting their plan here and all the work that they've done, which has been done, so.
Right.
Already been done, right? That's done. There's a NMPA semi-annual meeting that'll be held on Embassy Suites in Syracuse, Destiny three eleven. I don't know how to pronounce that name, that road name, Syracuse, New York, October Registration forms, agenda, and proxy. Should we send Jason Juno to this? I don't have my calendar in front of me, but I think I might be busy on the twenty-seventh.
I think we should do the resolution by proxy. And let the board vote on our, on our behalf.
For Jason Juno?
No. With proxy.
Oh, just do the proxy.
Please do the proxy.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, other news. Dan Steck is going to be in town on the twenty-seventh of, twenty-sixth of October. He'll be here all day. He's going to be doing tours, tours of various different restaurants, Fort Montgomery and the afternoon. I'm going to take him to the water plant, the sewer treatment plant, and maybe swing, swing by Public Works. And if you guys, if the tenants and property over the ERS agree, he's available to tour there as well.
Okay, I'll check with them.
So it'd be good to have Dan Steck in town. He gets in at about eight in the morning and he'll be here all day. Okay. That's everything I've got. Trustee Arnold?
Ethan, I talked to Ethan today and he wanted to know, help if, when they start skating, if they have to wear masks and stuff, is it still mandated to wear masks?
Yes. You're, you're nodding yes, Arson.
Yeah, it's still.
Yeah, because it's, yeah, because it's a village building?
Yeah. Okay, so I'll tell him tomorrow that it's mandated that wear masks, everybody.
Yeah, because it's a village building.
Okay. And fire department purchased that land behind the fire station from Mrs. Bechar and they're starting to cut the brush back there and the trees. And they wanted to know, probably like on a Saturday, certain people could use the wood chipper to chip the brush. And I talked to Adam today and he said, "As long as somebody supervises, you know, that knows about the wood chipper and stuff, so."
That should be fine.
Yeah.
Who, who would be there watching, supervising?
I'll be there.
You'll be there?
Yeah.
Okay.
So they want to clean up them two lots. There's a lot of trees on the lots and stuff like that.
What are you doing there, Brian?
We just bought the two empty lots back there and we, there's a lot of trees back there that we want to cut down.
What were the plans of the property? Are you just going to just have?
Yeah, we're just going to keep the property, yeah.
Remembering those open ladder lot.
Yeah.
Angle buffer or whatever.
Okay.
Just have a buffer to the property with our?
Um, because we use the, the property for our chicken barbecue and, and it's been to the point where we want to do some additional training. We have an area that we can do.
Okay.
The company, the company bought it themselves.
Okay. Good. Long-term, an ambulance station would be put back there down the road.
Well, I think, I think his head is.
Camp Lane.
Yeah. And also, I talked to Johnny Menard and he welded.
Yes, sir.
I should have a motion for that.
Motion for?
The wood chipper.
Okay.
I make that a motion that we can, fire department use the wood chipper.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also, I talked to Johnny Menard about welding the railing down to the waterfront gazebo and he welded thirteen spots on it that were broken. So it's all done, stuff like that. That's all I have for now.
Uh, I've got an update for you though. I spoke with Ethan about mowing that back property.
Yeah.
That's got to show him where it is.
Oh, okay.
Because he's not sure where it is.
Okay.
That left front property.
Okay.
Trustee Menard?
I'd like to discuss the dog park. We're getting real close to putting some fence up, hopefully, and I'd like to thank Lori Langley for all the work she's done. She gave us rules that she's been working on that she's collected from different towns and they all look good. And it will have signs posted as soon as the board approves the, the rules. And I'm going to give a copy to our lawyer and Tom Berning so he can check them over. And I give copies to everybody. And hopefully we can start putting some fence up soon. Hopefully that'll be up before winter. We probably won't be able to use it before spring, but at least we can get it fenced in anyway.
Pretty good rules. All dogs must be leashed, oh, all dogs must be at least four months of age, display license, be healthy, have current vaccinations. No more than two dogs per handler. Dog handlers must be sixteen years old. Dogs must be leashed while entering and exiting the park. Dog handlers must be within the dog park and supervise their dog with leash readily available. Animals should wear collar and ID tags at all times. Dogs must be under voice control and accompanied by dog handler at all times. No food or treats allowed within the park area. Dog waste must be immediately cleaned up and properly disposed of. No digging allowed. If dog does dig under, under, dig, the handler must fill the spot immediately. Dogs who are unruly or aggressive, exhibit aggressive behavior towards people or on the dogs or are heat are not allowed within the park. Use park at all risk. Violators will be subject to removal from the park and suspension of park privileges. Owners are legally responsible for the behavior and actions of their dogs at all times in contact with any questions. We'll need to figure out a phone number.
The village phone number.
This is village office phone number?
Yeah.
Okay, and when you say there's no food, that's for the dogs.
Dogs treat their people with food because you don't want dogs, you know, going after somebody with food.
Well, the only trouble is sometimes when they have their soccer tournament down there, they have food set up.
Right. It's not going to be near the.
There just can't be, inside the, inside the dog park.
Oh, oh, okay. All right.
Outside there's.
You don't want other dogs surrounding you.
Oh, okay.
I would use, I would move the use park at all risk from towards the bottom block as the very first thing.
Yeah.
That way, from the center and top. Are these going to be two different signs?
There'd be two different signs because instead of somebody having to read everything, then you have the prohibited. With the dog park, it's more like the main topic. We get two signs made up.
No glass containers, no sight dogs, no one back to your dog, no aggressive dogs, no dogs that eat. Children under ten, no children under ten unless accompanied and supervised by adult, no digging, no puppies under four months. No human and dog food or treats. Can we add the use park at all risk to, oh wait, no, that doesn't fit under my definition necessarily. Okay. I think this is a good rule set.
Whatever changes you want to make, just, you know, we can go, go through it with your, with everyone and then we can, once it's approved, then we'll, we'll find out, find somebody else to make these signs for us.
Now, the only suggestion I have is to use dog, use park at all risk, put that at the top.
Okay.
Anybody else, anyone else got any suggestions? Nope?
I mean, we're just, there're just going to be dogs allowed into the dog park on the stone, right?
Yes.
If it just says animals should wear a collar, probably should say dogs shall wear a collar or whatever. So that's, that goes dogs, not other animals.
Right. Let's add, maybe we should make another rule, dogs only. That way, no one tries to bring a horse in or something.
Somebody throw a cat in there.
Or throw cats in there. Also make that dog requir, dogs required to wear a collar instead of should.
Shall.
Shall. Any other suggestions, Tom?
No, just looking at what we've got.
Okay.
Others, it's a good list.
Do you want some time to review it or do you think we're going to pretty much approve this today?
I think you can do it today because you guys want some time to review it. It's pretty comprehensive. Okay. Lori, are you going to make these signs up?
Yes, I'm going to. I'm going to do some research on who we can get to make the signs because I did call the Clinton County Health Department today because I had a sign, a copy of a sign, but they have a case a dog bite somebody. And they emailed me the template, which all, which is covered here. It's the same thing that they had in Plattsburg. And I can email it to you, Dale, if you want.
Okay.
And you can see it. And I'm going to check with, with Jeff Foyer, see if he can do the signs for us.
We want metal signs?
Aluminum. Yeah, metal signs.
We have.
We have a guy in the village that does signs.
Oh, you do? Who's that?
Midstate.
Midstate, yeah.
Midstate.
Midstate.
Midstate?
Yes.
He comes here. You go down, you go down to the village garage and talk to Johnny Menard.
Okay.
He can get you prices and stuff like that.
All right, good.
Want to make a motion to accept, please?
Yeah, I make a motion to accept the dog, dog park rules.
All seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And again, I would just like to thank Lori Langley for all her hard work and dedication to this park.
Thank you.
And that's all I have for this.
So we're going to start mapping that out down there, marking it out where it's going?
Weekend?
Yeah. You want to start it, right?
Yeah.
I mean, you're going to start probably in November, yeah? Set the goal?
Well, anywhere, anytime. I'd go autumn.
Well, you got, you got the, the spring for the fall pickup here next week.
Yeah.
And it's the end of the month, so.
the end of the month, so you're looking at November first here, so.
Oh, God, yeah, it's already the second beginning of the month.
It's, so, I think we should, you know, get together, go down, mark out where you want the gates, where you want, you know, the fence, get it all done, so we can get, drive some stakes in, so the guys can go down there on whatever day and they can draw all the holes and the holes.
That'd be great, yeah, I'm, whenever.
Yeah.
Yeah, can get ahold of me whenever.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get ahold of them.
Yeah.
Get together and.
Get it up and running.
Yeah.
That's it, so, what else do you have?
Yes, I have an update on the water and the sewer departments, um, the water plant, they went around and they, uh, they winterize all the fire hydrants, so the fire hydrants are to be used, we need to contact the water plant so they can go back and pump them back out, winterize those so they don't freeze, so, uh, other than that, you're just doing a maintenance, uh, schedule, um, quite a few of them are going for lab, uh, lab course tomorrow for, part of their qualification to keep their license. The sewer department, I talked to, uh, Danny Gay, the wastewater superintendent, and, uh, the pilot project is going really well down at, uh, that we're taking the sludge from independent outfits, we're, we're making quite a bit of money on it. The only complaints that I've hear is when they're dumping, there's a smell for about thirty minutes down there, down by the bolt launch. So I talked to him and I talked to Adam about maybe creating a different site to dump it, so the reason why they dump it is because they have to dump it into a pit, they can't just dump it over the wall at the, at the wastewater plant. So we're gonna look at possibly figuring out an estimate on what it would cost us to put a pit, which we already have the pits, we're donated from Pfizer before they left, to give us all them braving manholes up there, so we're talking about setting the manhole in and buying one pump to pump it out, and we made enough money that we can, we can buy a pump, and it, but, uh, that way the bolt launch won't be congested with the truck backed in there when they're trying to pull bolts out, and you won't have the smell, the smell will be at the wastewater plant for one hazard dump. So I asked them to work on that project, possibly through the winter, and maybe in the spring we can get something going on there.
Yeah, I think like in the summertime when it's hot, that'd be a bad place to be.
Yeah, I noticed it even, even at my house, I can tell that when the south wind's blowing, you can smell a little bit, but it's gone, once they're done, it's gone, but it's just, we don't wanna inconvenience anybody, and, uh, it seems like we're doing very well and collecting revenue off it, so, and we haven't really noticed a, a big difference in our, in our waste up there, so it's mixing in very well.
Okay. There's plenty of space up there, so we're planning to do it.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be, uh, it's, it's the sink, one of those manholes in the ground so they can pump it to the manhole, and then the pump would pump it up into the building. I'll put it for the headworks.
Would the, uh, pit to dump it into be put inside the fence?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it'd be right up next to the building where everything delivers now.
Okay, good.
That big high building that's up in the back.
Yeah.
That's, that's where it would go.
Just wanna make sure it's like inside the fence.
Oh, yeah, definitely. No, 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 definitely.
Uh, trustee, oh wait, is that everyone?
I have one other thing, I need an executive session to talk about employment of a new hire.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is that ready?
Yes.
Okay, trustee Rodriguez?
Well, I just wanna reemphasize the fall cleanup date, October twenty-fifth, twenty-ninth, this is the last one for the year, and, uh, I would also request an executive session to talk about the history of particular employee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's it.
I have one other thing, Mr., uh, on the plow truck, I was over talking to Johnny Menard today, and the plow truck is in dire need of a new one. I mean, they, just the slag alone, there was about twenty pounds of slag on the rust and stuff like that on the floor, and, uh, the two air tanks for the air brakes and stuff, where one of them was shot completely, had two bad, uh, holes in the tank, and the element was just about ready to, uh, get some holes in it and stuff like that, so I think we're gonna start looking for a new plow truck, or put money into the fund for a new plow truck.
I think there's some money in there, but there's not enough for a full.
No, it's gonna be about a hundred and seventy thousand for a truck, so, and it'll probably take a year to get one anyhow, so, you know, we have time and stuff, but they're working on that right now and stuff, but Johnny had to go get two new tanks today, so, to work on it, to get the plow truck going and stuff like that, but it's in dire need, uh, the frame and everything is really in bad shape.
At all, last winter they had issues, I think it was the turbo?
Yes, yeah, they just put six thousand dollars into the turbo and stuff like that.
Yeah, they're plowing without the turbo off.
Yeah. How many plow trucks does the village have? One, one. How old is the one that's?
Two thousand six.
Thirty-one thousand?
Yeah, that's all it is, yeah. But they would take and keep that one and take the dump box off and have it remodel the other one on the new truck when they get one, if they do get one and stuff, and keep that one for another boat truck, but the other one we have is like sixteen years old, the other small trucks and stuff like that, the small dump truck.
And a smaller one can have a plow on it, so it's not really suited for that at all.
No.
It'd be a backup, backup of desperation.
Yes.
We call the ambulance first. Question is, how would we do that? Other reports?
This, uh, this one, Mr. Mayor, on code enforcement, the house on forty-three Chapman Street, they have settled an insurance claim on that, uh, a contractor's been contacted to, uh, to demo it, uh, we're waiting, gotta get the asbestos abatement permits and all this stuff, they're gonna sign the papers at the end of the month, shortly after that they should start the demo and the cleanup.
So that'll be next month they start the demo?
Yes. As soon as they get the asbestos abatement, and we get it on file, I can, I can issue a demo for that.
I wonder why it took so long from, for the insurance company to close. Okay, it's all.
The mayor, he got it though, he called me right up, so.
Good. Yeah, I knew he wasn't delaying, to be annoying, it was just.
Well, in a, in a way it wasn't his fault, but what are you gonna do?
Yeah, insurance companies do, as insurance companies do. Any other reports?
I need someone to request an executive session to discuss customer contract negotiations.
Someone?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, any, any other comments? Done once, or twice, okay, I'll make a motion to go into recess.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.